Good evening to everyone. Appreciate all of you being here tonight. I think we're here for our 2018 districting city council districts. Paula, Ms. Anderson, anything that you care to share before we kick this off?
Sorry?
Just, no, I mean, just in general process.
Oh, Gunnar Sequist, he's here as our outside counsel. Just to kind of discuss with you, I think you've got kind of an agenda. And basically, we're just going to discuss the process and criteria for transitioning our existing system to a single-member district system. And Gunnar is also going to talk to you about some different, he has some questions for you, I'm sure, and we're going to work on kind of coming up with some illustrative plans. So moving forward quite a bit in the redistricting process. Nothing, there will be no votes today or no action item on the redistricting. It's just kind of the initial process. And I think something will be brought back in September, maybe on the September 17th meeting, something more final, just depending on how far along we get.
Very good. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Good evening, council members. It's good to see all of you again, staff as well. As we talked, the last time I was here, I gave you an overview of the process. And our purpose for being here tonight, as Ms. Anderson just said, is to actually get together with you. We have prepared a conversation starter, which is a plan where we have taken, obviously, the city currently is a six-place council, and with four residential districts, we have drawn an example plan that cuts that into six single-member districts to get folks looking at it, get the juices flowing a little bit, and so that we can have a discussion with you folks about what you like about the plan, what we might be able to change to make it more representative of your wants and aspirations for the community or for this plan. Or, you know, again, the plan that we ultimately end up with may look very similar to the example plan that we have prepared and brought tonight, or it may look nothing like that. We, you know, it just depends on how the council drives this issue. Just so, this is a timeline I had put up the first time I was here, just to orient you guys as to where we are at the moment. We're here at the develop the illustrative plan. As Ms. Anderson was saying, once, you know, we develop one or more plans that the council members like, we'll bring those back at the September 17th meeting. And at that time, the council will be able to vote on designating an actual illustrative plan, which we will then use for purposes of soliciting public comment. So the public has an opportunity to weigh in, give their input, and if they so desire, to submit alternate plans of their own. At that September 17th meeting, we will also go ahead and set the public comment periods. And at the end of, once we've done the drawing session, we have some plans to work with. I'll talk to you a little bit more about some of the options that you, the council will have in terms of how we run the public input sessions and the specific dates that have been proposed.
Can you describe the? Explain the word, sorry. Can you explain the word illustrative? Because I know that's, is that just a starting point? Is that what you're referring to as an illustrative plan?
That's right. And the illustrative plan, the real purpose there is not only to have something for the council to consider and work from, but really just to have a benchmark plan for citizens to look at and provide their input on as well. That way, when the public does come in to give its input, it's working, we can all kind of have a common starting place in the discussion. And so that's the purpose of the illustrative.
Yeah, it's by no means what we may end up with, but it's just a starting point.
That's an excellent point. It is just a starting point. And as I said, the plan we brought tonight is an example. That will then morph into options for the illustrative plan. The illustrative plan will draw citizen comment, and then after that point, the council will have an opportunity again with our assistance to make any modification or changes, to arrive at what will be the ultimate plan to be voted on. And that process, or the ultimate vote, will take place in November.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. One of the things we like to talk about before we actually get into the drawing are the redistricting criteria. These criteria will guide, they have guided us in the preparation of the example plan that we are going to show you. And they will also, they're the criteria that the council adopted the last time we were here to guide the council's evaluation and analysis of plans, as well as any plans suggested by citizens. And so just to go through these, to tell you, when we give you the example plan, some of the things that have gone into it. Where possible, we have used easily identifiable geographic boundaries. That means in terms of putting together districts, we have followed major roadways so that the districts will track major roadways here in the community. Facilitate practical voting precincts. Where possible, we have tried to avoid splitting voting precincts so that you don't have citizens from two different single-member districts having to vote in the same precinct. I will tell you that based on the population, there are some areas where we have had to split a voting precinct, and we can talk more about that if it's a concern. Some of them are kind of small splits that we can probably round off sort of in polishing. Some of them are more substantial due to population in those particular areas, and so a little harder to fix those. But, well, we can certainly talk about them if they cause any particular concern. We have balanced the districts to be relatively equal in total population. Again, this is, we'll give you the numbers tonight. Those numbers are going to be based on the 2010 census. We don't have any, the standard is deviation shouldn't exceed 10%. I think the biggest deviation that we had was 3.2%. So all of our numbers are in good balance on the example plan. And to the extent there are any changes made tonight, we'll make sure that all of those maintain an appropriate deviation as well. You'll see on our plan that we have drawn compact and contiguous districts. We don't have a whole lot of jagged lines or, you know, unusual-looking districts. We try to, as much as possible, keep compact, cleanly drawn districts. Of course, you know, just based on roadways or population, there are going to be some areas where they're not as smooth as others. But on the whole, we have compact and contiguous districts. We have taken into account any concerns about Voting Rights Act considerations in terms of population balance. We have made sure in the example plan that we're going to show you, and we will certainly evaluate going forward whether any particular plan tends to crack or pack minority populations in any of the single-member districts. We have looked at the population. It does not appear, based on the distribution of demographic population across the city here in Mesquite, that you are able to draw a balanced district that has a, that's a minority-majority district. There just aren't sufficiently large and compact minority populations to draw a district that is the right size, that is also a majority-minority district. So that, from a voting rights standpoint, we are in compliance there. And so, you know, as I think I told you in our, in our last presentation, as far as the consideration of race, ethnicity, minority status when it comes to drawing this district, what the courts have told us is, we look at that only so far to make sure that there are not concerns about violations to the Voting Rights Act. We have followed that directive, and the example plan that we're going to present tonight does not, in our opinion, present those concerns. Of course, if we change anything, we'll reanalyze and undertake that evaluation on any changes that are made as well. And then, this is actually the redistricting guidelines, which we will talk about. These are going to be governments who govern citizen-submitted plans, and I'll explain these at the end. And this is also something that we'll present to the council for adoption at the September 17th meeting. At this point, unless there are any further questions, my plan is to go ahead and pass out the example plan and materials. And we're going to have Sherry McCall, who is our GIS specialist. Sherry runs the computer, and will show you the map that we've drawn, and then she can also input any changes that we have. She's a tech wizard, and she can manipulate these things very well. So I'll ask her to come up.
Before you do that, any questions on this so far? Because we've got, we want to make sure there's anything. Okay, move forward.
Sure.
So this is, again, taking the whole city and breaking it down into six districts of approximately equal size, which in this case, the target district would be about 23,284 This is the breakdown that we have, again, following major thoroughfares and trying to preserve what we have identified as neighborhoods or communities of interest for cohesion. One of the things that I think would be very helpful from a council's perspective is, you know, obviously, you folks have sort of the on-the-ground knowledge of which of these areas, which communities view themselves as essentially being together, having shared interests. Certainly, if we have not accurately reflected that, or if we've put some of those groups, we'd like to know that. If there are other resources, parks, et cetera, that go with a particular community that don't, are not reflected here or are mismatched here, that certainly is something that we would like to know.
These are the current districts. The colors are those districts.
That's right. Now, the current districts are outlined in black, and then the colors reflect, because we wanted to at least approximate or give you some representation of what the current residential districts look like. And then the colored shaded areas reflect the six new single members.
Thank you.
And if you want, I can zoom in on the map and move down through the city so you can actually see where some of these boundaries are.
And I think that would be helpful, and then if we want to, we can get, we can't see all this very well in printout, you can do this. So if you can get into each district and get over there and take a look at it.
We can absolutely do that.
I'd be happy to start up at the top and kind of move through the districts so you can see where the boundaries are. If you want to see election precincts and various street facilities or some other items like that, I have all that available to put up on the map to look at as well.
Sure.
Okay, so we start up at the north and work our ways down. Let's get some streets up for you. district is more of the Hispanic influence district. It actually, let me, let me explain something for the bomb. Okay, the demographics that you have on your chart, they're also across the bottom here. And when we talk about deviation, about a district being too heavy or too light, what's going to happen is this deviation column right here. If we're in deviation, the numbers you're reading, you start getting too heavy or too light, and it's on red. Okay, so that's when we start moving stuff down. The overall deviation is up in the top here, it's at 5.8. And what that does is that measures the district with the lowest population, and you add it positively to the district with the highest population, and the sum of those two will give you the overall deviation. Just see, available, I have parks and facilities, and I'm not at the microphone. I have parks, facilities, polling locations, election precincts, anything else that you want to look in a particular district to see. I've got subdivisions, and we can overlay those on top and move around and look at those as well. So District 1 is, is our Hispanic influence district. It has 47.54% Hispanic total population. This particular district has boundaries that are not as so much along major thoroughfares as some of the other ones. We built this district first. It has, it tidies up pretty nice to the subdivisions, but it has a little bit more of a jagged boundary in order to accommodate the 47.5%.
And that's one of the things I wanted us to be sure, and you mentioned this several times, but to not, to try as best we can not to break up neighborhoods that are pretty much have been together as neighborhoods for 30, 40, 50 years. And I know that when you really get minute when you start looking at number of people and population and all that, but.
And for subdivisions, we looked at what was called a subdivision combined file. So what I did was I tried to follow some subdivision lines as they were drawn out in polygons by your city staff. What I wasn't aware of is if there's a subdivision of one name, and it's actually kind of a community of interest with the subdivision that's maybe across a highway, maybe those go together. And so that's something we'll need to look at, because I will need your input for that kind of information.
Well, like, this is an example right there where the two of them come together. I don't know, just looking on the map, if the light yellow and three to the north and the darker, if those are actually all part of the same subdivision necessarily. Or if that's a fairly natural boundary line there.
Let me get the subdivision names up so that you can see them. Ooh, it's too big. One thing to note, sometimes subdivision boundaries and census geography, they don't always line up.
Right.
Exactly perfect. So if you see a little bit of an offset, that's usually the difference between the two types of data.
Okay.
In particular, are you, let's see, let me, let's go ahead and. Talking about that area right there.
That's one, and there's several others, but I'm just trying to see what, what's tied together naturally now versus, you know, looking at pure numbers and data. And one side of the line versus the other side of the street. I don't know if that matters, but it would if you're both trying to get something done down one particular area. I guess it would make the two of them work together.
Is that pretty much the border there tomorrow?
Let me, let me pan up a little bit so you can see. This is, this is going to be our border between 1 and 3. And then as we go south, the border comes across the highway, and it goes a little further south below 30. And I can come out just a little bit. And that street, let me drop these off. That's Town East Boulevard comes around the curb, and that is the southern part of District 1. And we follow it all, let's see, blue's a little dark, lighten this up a little bit.
So that one, District 1, that we're looking at right there, is that current or is that new?
This is new.
Okay.
This is new. I actually do not, on this, on the maps up here, I do not have the current lines up, if you want to see them.
So, no, that's fine. So I would just make sure, so what we were seeing while I go, there was still more to District 1 below that?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, great.
And let me zoom out, and I'll show you that, that section here.
Kind of walk in on there.
Okay, once you, once you hit 30, you've got this whole area right here, and it goes all the way down to, let's see, I need to get this street right here. Baker Drive, that little triangle part that comes down.
So when you're looking at these districts, do you identify neighborhoods that you, oh, do you identify neighborhoods that you think we have split, or you're just making sure that?
Well, no, when I look at these, when I look at these maps, we've, I participated a couple of times, never looked at the districts in the past, and that's one of the things that, it's a little easier with four than six.
Sure.
Is looking at contiguous neighborhoods that maybe interact together already and have a, you know, relationship, whether it's an elementary school, or whether it's, they're, you know, some way tied together that we weren't splitting that particular thing right in two. And it's usually not much, there's, you know, when you start really diving into it. But that's, that's just something that always comes to mind.
Oh, absolutely.
We'd come to a point and go, well, wait a minute, this is, of course, like North Ridge is 1,000-plus homes. That entire area is just, you know, huge, but some of the others, it's hard to tell first time just looking at it, so I'm just.
Sure.
Just kind of getting a glance, thank you.
Well, and that's, I mean, we have obviously gone from the subdivision data the best we can, but certainly, you know, in terms of any on-the-ground knowledge, if you see something that we've, we've split up, of course, that's part of the, the public process, they'll, they'll let us know too, because I think we have split a neighborhood, for sure.
And earlier, you had identified a few areas that you felt like were kind of compromises that maybe we had split up, but it was kind of necessary to get something on the board. Voter precincts, things like that. Are you going to kind of walk us through as we go through that?
We can take a look at those for sure. I mean, to be clear, we, again, we've adhered to the subdivision boundaries there, and so where that's happened is because we have followed either a road or a subdivision boundary as opposed to just maintaining a whole voter precinct.
Okay.
And of course, you know, the county can clean up the voter precincts where, you know, the next time, easily in odd years, they can clean that up.
Yeah, I think that sounds like good priorities, yeah, in that order.
Okay, we have to move up a little bit. Is everybody okay with kind of where District 1 is, where it's, got your bearings for it? All right, let's go, we're going to go back up to District 3. District 3 comes down 635. It takes up the northeast quadrant of the city. It comes down, okay, so I built District 1 first. So once I filled it up with the population for it to be an appropriate size, then I moved over to District 2. And since we can't go back to the west, District 2 starts at the top, and we build it down. And in this particular instance, District 2 is going to be an area where there are some split, District 2, District 3 boundary are where there are some split election precincts. And let me come in a little closer on the boundary. This is the town east small area over here by the highway, and it runs down Americana Lane.
So, I don't know, are you talking just north there? There's some houses and things just north of Americana that maybe are part of this, part of the neighborhood on the other side. There's not many.
Okay.
Maybe these areas here, right in here?
Right.
And these belong more, say, to the side over on the other side?
Right, that they're continuation, like this Fox Glen.
Mm-hmm.
It goes up and loose back and the other side.
Right here, these areas right here.
Yeah, they're all part of that same neighborhood, I think.
Do you want to go ahead and put them in District 2, see?
I mean, that's, I'm just, I'm looking for those type of anomalies, these houses.
I'm making a note of them.
And actually, let me show you a precinct line here and take off the subdivisions.
I don't know if it lives there.
Just need to be a little better.
That you?
I live south of Americana.
South of, yes, that one.
Okay, in this instance, this is where we did split two precincts, 3303 and 3304. Those precincts are split.
Is it actually one?
Yeah.
It's about sliding, like here, maybe one of the town center, it's listed, I don't think they'll see this all, but maybe there's some housing that's attached.
Okay.
This, I said attached, this is all part of, this neighborhood feeds into that one. It's just maybe a better boundary. I don't know if the population points you on.
We can, we can check that right now. Okay, so that area right there?
Mayor, how was your, to the last section, the far left?
It has 1,573 people in it.
What is that, far left?
No, no, no. The dotted left, right there, just that zone, maybe as two, but keep the apartments as three. Yeah, those two.
Oh, it stays, it needs to stay, okay. Like that?
Other way around.
Other way around.
That blue, the other two yellow.
Switch it back.
Put it back in.
The ones above Americana yellow?
Correct. And leave those as, then drop those two to yellow?
Yeah. So we're just moving out.
So we're going to switch, so we're only talking about.
Because those are the homes, the single-family homes.
These are homes, those are, I mean, these are apartments, so you can leave those as solid.
Okay, so those are fine, just the homes. This?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
That keeps the neighborhoods together.
We were back here talking.
There we go.
And that didn't bust the deviations much.
We're all still green?
Yeah, not many people.
I was, I was only 121 people, so we're pretty good there.
You wanted to see more of 3?
More of 3? I have a little bit cleaner map to look at, and take the precincts off.
Oh, yeah, you've got to, right, live around absolutely.
And then that neighborhood, East Gus Thompson, you could try and make.
And then again, that's a home.
It comes after the point here, but otherwise.
Okay.
As far as 1, I think we call it St. Andrews slash Country Road. Those crime watches have been working very well together.
So that's not only with this, is it?
Yeah, just kind of north of that, of that area.
Oh, right there, I didn't, and they work well with these guys?
Yeah.
So that section up there, maybe better in District 1?
I think we worked well with the Shands, and I think we put more of the Shands.
Yeah, this, this whole section right here, honestly, is that kind of what I'm hearing? If that's that right, all of this, from 635 over, this entire, that group kind of, I didn't hear all of this, and you'd have to reshuffle, right? As far as that, I'll let you.
I agree with the mayor. I mean, that neighborhood is more, from Gus Thompson to Galloway is more of one neighborhood.
Yeah, all of this.
Probably the goal should be to try and keep that in one district as much as possible.
And Galloway runs, this is Galloway. So here, all of, in this section, just to Galloway right there.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay, let's do it.
You're going to have to. You're going to have to see what we can, if we do that, we've got to take out some of this, which may be on the south or whatever, is that right?
Yeah, there's a commonality of interest.
Yeah, we'll rotate, we'll have to rotate it.
Feeds into the same schools.
That's, yeah, that's what makes us think about it, too. So if you go right along Galloway here, right, so you're leaving some of this, that's okay.
Boy, and is there, is there a way to do school attendance zone?
During a school district?
That.
Yes.
That seems like a big chunk. To me, if you keep the area that feeds into Shands Elementary together, maybe with one, and then the area that feeds into Florence, I think you would actually be able to kind of come a little bit farther and feed that into three.
Okay.
See what I'm saying, man?
Okay.
So you're with three, so if you put in both elementary schools, that's a bunch of single-family homes, and it's hard to balance that. So, oh, you thought using oats as a divider?
Right.
Okay, so we could, they have oats right here.
So everything to the north of that?
Yes.
Okay.
In one?
In one.
There's different crime watches in Florence.
Uh, hang a minute, let me ask you a question. You want that triangle, this one right here, that right there as well, or not? It's, okay.
Probably, because you've got six thirty-five.
At boundary. Okay, something like that, into one.
And then to balance it, I would say any area that feeds into Florence.
Is that going to be down here?
Into three. Yeah, that, that's.
So you're going to take, take some of this, there's only, and there's, is all of it coming in?
Okay.
Where it takes the balance.
Come down here.
Right.
Right. Pull this down, and then go down to there, and use that whole just.
There's a section here?
Yes, and go up.
Yeah, I will see here. Okay, that area there, back to three.
At least for this, the legislature.
Sure.
Yeah.
We're doing right there, like, we're, and then you're keeping, you're saying you're keeping these groups together, school, this is school, and you've got neighborhoods pattern to get it that way.
Okay.
So are you in the red or the green at that time?
The red and one.
About five.
So, wait, is, is one too low or too high?
One's too high.
One is just a little bit too high, it needs, it needs to lose just a couple hundred people, maybe.
Well, my, my suggestion then, and I understand where everybody's going, I, I don't have an issue, just south of six, I'm sorry, just south of thirty, is that sliver between Gus Thomason and six thirty-five.
Right here.
That's traditionally been, been a part of the district that's on the other side of that highway anyway, and that could get you over to the deviation.
Okay.
Take this section right there.
Okay.
I like that. We'll see what happens with the numbers.
It got worse.
It wasn't-
Well, now one's too small and, and three's too big.
What, what?
Flip-flop.
We can, we can, we can move-
You mean it went from too small to too big?
One, one went from too big to too small, and then three went from imbalanced to-
The magic of redistricting.
Yeah, exactly.
Maybe driftwood is the natural divide there, to, uh, we want to go.
Driftwood's here?
Yeah.
Uh, split, uh, the-
One division.
Driftwood's, probably it's on one side.
Could maybe a more long here? Does that, would that make the difference?
I can see.
Put it back in one, right here.
Just like that?
Yes. Let's look at that.
That's what they're saying.
Got to work.
Mm-hmm, is that, Robert, is that just getting kind of?
That's, yeah, I mean, because that side, I mean, first of all, there's a certain level of trying to keep things that were traditionally working together, together, and I think that that, to a certain extent, does. I mean, none of these districts are going to be, remain whole, they're just not, but that keeps certain traditional patterns. I think the area north of Oats, from Gus Thomason all the way to six thirty-five, has sort of a, a commonality of interest, and it's important to keep that together. I, I mean, I'd like the south side to stay with that district too, but I don't know if we're going to be able to do that, so, but, you know, it, it seems like we've made the adjustments to maybe balance these things out.
The, the adjustments we've made so far, they work, they work, we're, we're in good shape.
Anything else you see on one and three? Drop down to two.
Okay, on to two.
So I'll only say on, since I represent a significant portion of one, I represent right now the portion south of thirty that's newly designated one, there's sort of a commonality of, I mean, both crime watches meet together. Range, which is that part south of thirty that's now designated in one, and then the town east that's in blue on the right side there, those, those crime watches meet together. But, you know, in anticipation, I, I, I don't know how you would, you know, draw that unless you do a radical redraw of all of this to keep those together. One thing I want you to look at, though, is Baker and Town East, that little pie piece there?
Here.
Right in here?
Yeah, what does changing, and, and the only reason is, is I'm just looking at trying to keep neighborhoods with commonality of interest together. What does that do?
In that triangle?
That triangle over to-
Two, two.
Correct. Just what does that do for the deviation?
That section there?
Yes.
And we're going to put it into?
Yes, just want to see what it does.
Oh, yeah. No, no problem.
Is it way too much?
It was about three thousand, yeah, it was three, four thousand people, yeah. And actually, I can, let's, let's take a look and see exactly how many we have in there. Let's see what, let's see what we're working with here in this particular section. We can look at the-
I agree with that area, obviously, it's got to get it.
You take the apartment, is there an Anthony?
Yeah, there's thirty-five hundred people on that triangle, thirty-five hundred and sixty-six.
So you're saying, so?
Yeah, if you break it there where that apartment complex is.
Here?
You take that, because, yeah.
Is that the only one? Or is there others?
There's one, two, there's two, there's two, two apartment complexes in that area right there.
Right there? So you think that's where most of the population, move it back into one?
I mean, if you're trying to cut some, I'm not, keep the residents individually together.
I think Tandy's right. That sounds right. Like, just, put, put that smaller quarter back in this new one.
Let me get a, a better color, so we can see what's, I can see what's selected. Here we go.
What about right here?
Yeah, that's, that's the other apartment.
Yes.
Okay.
You have to take that.
Right here.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, okay. Let me grab the rest of it.
Yeah, let's go a little bit more of it.
Uh, this section here?
Yes, including the bottom section. Okay.
One still needs more population from, from, and maybe not this area, maybe somewhere else, but it is, it's about nine percent like. We need, we need fifteen hundred people, maybe? Backer.
Can you move it to the west just a little bit? The map to the west?
Maybe Sam?
Move it to my right.
Okay.
Sorry.
Maybe that, maybe Samuel is the divide?
Well, this is mostly, well, there are some, there are some, there are some, stuff running.
Uh, everything down underneath?
Go, go to Samuel.
Yeah, take all this up.
And Town East.
Take all that whole section up.
Does that get you green?
Great. Uh, hang on, I've got one little spot right here I need to clean up.
Well, okay.
There we go.
He's saying Eastbrook, are you saying to the northwest?
No.
Is that to the southwest? Is that what you're talking on, Eastbrook? Can you grab that? Yes, you, you did, it's a little bit down, a little bit down.
Uh, follow, follow the-
This one works out, that's true.
Right here?
One down, one down. The one that's-
The one up the top?
Yes.
Both.
That? Come all the way, or this whole section?
You're close, you're close. He's talking, Cliff, you're talking this one, right? That one. Let's see about shifting that back to-
Two?
Correct. No, 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 it's okay. No, he, Cliff is right about, you know, the, the, uh, single-family versus home-family nature, trying to keep neighborhoods together. Does that work?
It does work. Are you okay with how that looks?
Right?
Yeah, it's okay.
That saves that street.
From the, it's the street.
One side of it.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
All right, it keeps the street together.
Okay.
Anything else there that's, that's, sorry, that's two, one, two, three, okay, anything else?
I'm going to look at two again, let's back. And I'm sorry, I apologize, I changed the color on you guys, it was the blue district. I couldn't, I couldn't see the selected box, so it's now the peach district.
Two is Clary, where are we down to here? Here's the lane, and down here.
Let me give you a little more on the bottom there. There you go.
I think they're okay all up in here. This comes down, there's I, Baker, all that's placed together, and that's, it's, this is, this is, what we're doing.
You want a subdivision?
Which, so that all straight, that's the way it was set. It comes down this place the way that it's seen. We make sure that around, we get a little population all year.
That makes sense.
Spice area, rolling wood hills together.
Rolling, rolling wood hills.
Yeah, so, so this is still two, they're, they're, all that's together today, so, right now, with the silver, it's got a little.
Okay. Okay, you want me to zoom back out?
Yeah, people looking at each other, doing a different district.
And, um- Let's lighten up floor a little bit. Let me get a little bit easier to see.
See anything else, I'll, probably in two right here, anything else in two, four, okay? All right, we're good.
Okay.
Last second, look at four.
Four and five, moving down?
Yeah. About a, that's a part on two, four, eighty. All the way over to the right, over here.
Oh, that little, the part that's below eighty?
Yeah, up here.
Better for five or four?
It's probably better to be one of these two, just because of the freeway.
Okay.
And there's not, I mean, there's, there's houses.
That's the Walmart, though.
Yeah. Well, that's right, that's Walmart.
I heard it from a population.
It's not quite the move.
Five or four, it's probably four would be the smallest, then.
That section there.
Oh, yeah, there's apartments.
Yeah, how much does that change anything?
Five or four?
Four, this is right there.
Four?
Right.
Dramatically. Yeah, there's a lot of population, right?
Yeah, this, they can see what we've got in this little section here, it was-
Right, yes.
Twenty-three hundred people.
So move around. That's probably why I was up over here in three and two, to, to balance that out.
Uh, if you think, you know, you want to keep that in four.
It makes more sense to me here, because it's contiguous right now, but, of course, we kind of just, here, you're blocking a lot.
Is that corner piece?
This corner piece on the top of that, because it doesn't submit that population. Well, if it stays with four, we'd, we'd have to do something else.
We just need to move some, some population out of four somewhere.
That's what we're trying.
And, uh, right now, two.
Is because four is too high?
Yes, four is too heavy.
Okay, so does that mean that two's too two?
That is correct. So if you, if you find another area to adjust between four and two, you can make the swap.
Well, until we do, I think Galloway's a pretty natural divide, and it's apartment complexes versus single-family homes across from Galloway.
Well, and Galloway was the natural break previously, so there has been a historical , uh, community of interest.
Has that been your?
Yes. It's not mine, it's the district I represent, but, uh, that's, no, 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 it's okay.
No, no, I'm sorry.
Uh, but that has historically been in the district I represent, so it makes sense to, uh, keep that in that district.
Undo it?
And then that balances out some apartments.
And we can always come back to it, you know, work through the rest, and then come back and try to, okay?
Anything here, I'm looking at four right now, um, kind of got it going here, some white outlines.
This, that little space that bumps out right here, when I was looking at the subdivisions, that's original Mesquite. And so the question becomes, do you want that all in one district? So I, I put it with the rest of Original Mesquite, so.
Can you zoom in that area around the garden?
Left there, we're talking about this one.
Right here? Yes, sir.
Now, you're okay?
And, um, hold on a minute.
Oh, yeah, scar, this is the old Mesquite.
Let's see, uh. You want the neighborhoods back up?
Yes, please.
Okay. Just a second, let me give you a little bit more manageable label here. And let me come in closer. Let me, let me highlight the Original Mesquite, so you can see it. See that? Um, let's try it this way, let's do it, make it a little more. And I'll give you another color, District Four is not going to show that up very well. Let's see. Okay, there, there we go. That, that whole area that's kind of going through there, that's, it's got a label for Original Mesquite.
Oh, Mesquite, Original Mesquite.
Yeah.
What was it down, the original?
They've got some additional markers.
Oh, you put the bigger map?
Well, yes, it's focused on south of Siney, and maybe-
Hey, guys, I just bring up this point, I'm not sure recording makes a difference at this point, if, if we're going to have different conversations and be away from microphones.
Hold one.
So if we want to put one up there, as we're kind of working. So if we want to put one up there as we're kind of working.
Technical folks did say it makes a difference.
No, I agree with you, record everything, so, I still don't have, we had a map, it's a minute ago.
I'm backing it out, just trying to back it up.
Back out?
Yes. It was, it was a no before that.
Go up to eighty. Show the whole district.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for, show the whole district, please.
Uh, let me turn off. And off.
Okay. So, this in here, this New Market area, um, that's, you know, culturally a little bit differently than what you've got up there and then over, uh, in the Edgemont Park, um, Bellevue Heights area, but at the same time, problem is, it's, it's not that different over here either, so, maybe not the weekend day there, but this New Market and the, and the Car Run area, it seems a little bit different from, uh, areas of interest over here and, and up there, but then again, over here is kind of the similar thing as up here and over here, so... I'm just talking out loud.
Sure, I understand.
Are you talking about making...
You, you're talking about using New Market as the dividing street and taking New Market six thirty-five off?
Not necessarily.
And moving it to five, or what?
I'm not really proposing anything at this, at the moment, I'm just thinking out loud that, that this, this side of, uh, this side of New Market is, is kind of different than up here and over here and here, and that's the problem, is moving it over here is kind of the same scenario, so I don't, I don't really have a proposal right this second, I was just thinking out loud there.
Okay.
And what's it look like right now, in the current district?
Current district?
Because this is yours, right?
Yes.
You represent New Market neighborhoods right now?
It's real similar.
Yes, it's fairly similar.
Drops down over here a little bit.
Okay.
So that's what, that's about the only, that part's all over, very, very much.
I don't necessarily have a problem with it as it is, I'm just thinking about...
Trying to figure out what different means.
We can overlay the, uh, the current lines of the resident...
This is the current line, the dark black line?
It just picks up this down here.
Yeah, really, it's not, it's not tremendously different, so, I was just thinking about different types of neighborhoods.
Right. Can I look at, just, I'm not proposing this, I just want to look at this. What if you had this part of four and this part of five, south of Main, all in one district, and then the north part...
Mm-hmm, go east-west instead of north-south.
Yeah, what about that? What does that do?
Using military, probably, probably come all the way down here, easily, I'm gonna do just military.
I'm just curious.
You split downtown, it's good that way. Probably live downtown right now. Don't put a bunch in there yet.
There's some practice involved, right?
She does a good job, but...
Well, she hasn't clicked it yet. So four's too small.
Yeah, we need, we need more pop for four, there's just not enough north to, uh, compensate for all the pop we put in. So if there's another section, maybe another dividing line or something, we can come a little further south?
Yeah, I really like that, I think that'll...
What if you took it to Newsome, uh, west or east of, what street is that, right there? Brian? Yeah. Right.
Shaving off that part.
Yeah.
Yeah, get five a haircut right at that area.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right there.
Yeah, that's the four.
Yeah.
But it does split a neighborhood that, you know, right now is sort of a one neighborhood, though.
Except for Newsome, kind of...
Yeah, I mean, everything kind of north of Newsome is separate.
Okay.
Something like that?
Yes, that's what he means.
It's close.
Yeah.
Need a little bit more. Uh, let me, uh, let me look at the, let me go here to the far, and give you the whole picture of it.
They won't use them all the way down?
Yep, all the way.
I agree.
I'm sure there's a ton of homes, but, yeah.
Yeah.
Right in there, okay.
No, there's not much. Church. Yeah, it's all like that.
That, or further south?
Yeah, you got it.
Do that for right now. Where that next, come back across?
Okay, let me add this part first. And come back across to this section here. Okay?
This is what Carter... You got closed, but this whole business, this section is a neighborhood right here.
Mm-hmm.
So we're gonna pull that whole corner?
So... Okay, so are you, is, is four still too low?
Four is still, yeah, we need more population for four, and five is too heavy.
But it wasn't when we started the endeavor.
We had a...
Yeah, maybe like... Can undo twice.
Yeah, you get time, you know, it's about, just not sure what it is here, kind of through this section right here, just see what it looks like. You want to drop this down, come across, and about the column here.
It does, although it does divide that.
Uh, do you want to go across this way, like this?
Yeah, stay there, extra seater. That keeps...
Okay, hold on just a minute.
Probably need to take the, take the military section out, or take...
Well, it's a little... Bumpy.
Yeah, because you got, you got to pick up this, rest of that street.
Need to keep... There we go. Nope, not that one.
Okay.
You want to try that?
Sure.
Um, hang on, I see one up here, I've got to grab real fast, there we go.
First still a light.
Yeah, first of four still a light, wasn't quite enough.
I'm in favor, I think, of the, the vertical cleavages that we had at the beginning versus the horizontal cuts.
North-south orientation rather than east-west.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I mean, I wanted to see how it looked, but if we, if population will get you there, it won't get you there.
Uh, you want to zoom out a little bit, same seat?
What, you're saying that four is the one that's light?
Mm-hmm.
I thought it was just the carvers.
That corner?
Just finish this whole thing out right there.
Yeah, that whole, that whole bottom. It works.
What is five, what's five?
One. Let's zoom out a little bit, so you can see all of it, there you go.
Does that leave five and six with the population they need?
Population is over here.
Everything's fine.
Everything is fine, and, and I think somehow, we've gotten to the point where we've separated, uh, some of the council members who do live really densely together, so it's, it's interesting that somehow through this intellectual exercise, we've got to this point.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with that, I, I, I think a district on both sides of New Market being one district would be better.
They are pre-homes.
I agree completely with that.
They are pre-homes.
Let's put them all in one district.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Do you want, we, what we can do is, we can save this as an option, and that way, if we, um, go back to the other configuration, you, we at least have it.
Can have both.
That way you can have a copy of both.
Uh, unfortunately, I think this violates, uh, uh, the resolution that we just passed.
Well, and I guess I'm still curious on, on how we got down this intellectual exercise, because New Market is homogeneous in terms of socioeconomic status, between working across each other, the, the silk-stalking neighborhoods are, they're the same style homes, and so the split here...
Well, I didn't suggest the division at New Market.
I, I'm not suggesting you did.
I think that should be all in one district, both sides of New Market.
Sure, I agree.
Right.
What about, um, swapping that back to five and maybe taking some of this for four?
Yeah. Yeah, that's a great idea.
Okay, so we'll undo our last move and...
Yeah, this, right here.
You need to go back to five.
Put that into five.
Okay.
I agree.
Is that still in your microphone?
No. Close, it's fine.
And then you're right, see what a division line can be over here, to add this, over there.
These are all neighborhoods, this is a neighborhood, that's a neighborhood, that's a neighborhood.
They're all gonna be neighborhoods, though.
Separate neighborhoods, or...
You'd have to go, you'd have to go with that creek.
Well, Newsom's good.
Well, the creek right there, that you might get that one little part off of.
Let me get you some water.
Water?
You need water boundaries. Creek water!
Okay.
So you might take the right side of the creek off. Those, those houses there aren't part of this neighborhood over here, I believe.
That's a good thought.
The, everything on this side, in...
To the right.
Okay.
Of North Mesquite Creek, put this into four.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Four's light.
Because you have to add something to four.
Okay.
Right. But we, but to, to make the division at New Market, we violate the resolution that we passed.
I, I get that.
So that can't happen.
Back to the way it was originally presented from the consultants.
It works.
I think we were, it was working, and it didn't have that division at New Market, or, or the harebrained idea that I had about Newsom, so, um...
You mean, you were for it, now you're against it?
I was just looking at different options, so...
Me too.
Well, and if we stay at this iteration, I think the Mesquite Valley neighborhood, kind of, uh, the Native American tribe named streets, probably have more in common with Creek Crossing, or, uh, or the Clay Mathis area, either one of those districts, four or six.
Let's zoom in.
Yeah.
Take a look at it.
I'm a black foot, call this.
Their build time was really great, I think.
It's kind of unto itself, actually, because that was developed before Creek Crossing, it wasn't even thought about yet.
How hard would it be to get back to the map that y'all had over, over in this area? Do an undo, like, six undos? Can we press the button six times?
Are you saying that...
Be the back arrow?
The one that originally had, or what?
The, uh...
The very original.
Before we made that swap?
Right, the original one, the original one for four and five.
What's the original?
Uh, that we started out with.
Yes, they want to go back to...
No, not all the way, not all the way back to, no, just to, just to where we started working with four and five.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
That's, I think that's what we just said.
Okay, so I can say...
The original four and five division, just the four and five, when we started working on what was between four and five.
I think that we had already kind of made some adjustments to four before we started working on adjusting five.
That is correct.
And so what I'm saying is, I think that first change that I proposed at Newsom is kind of where we jumped the shark, uh, and so, um...
Oh, Happy Days reference?
We probably need, and hopefully, everybody got that reference, uh, hopefully, we can get back to that point.
You know, you actually did jump the shark, you know that, right?
So what I can do is, I can save this one in the configuration that we have here, we can save this one, and I can back us up to before the shark.
Yes, please.
Let's do this.
Give me just, just a second here. Is this, that's not the stupidest option? Okay, the dark black lines, that's, that's our option, and I'm, I'm gonna back us up, and you can tell me when we need to stop.
Is that the original?
No. They were going.
We still okay? Keep going?
One more.
Did you have to pick up the vertical, there you go.
That's it, that's the one you brought up.
All right, you're gonna, we're gonna save this one out?
When we started the conversation with this one, kind of here, and this, most of the two started, they think it was a little bit...
Yeah, so is, is that...
Give a mayor a cookie.
And this plan also works?
Which one, Carver?
Carver, right.
Option.
What the, here, sorry, what the city manager is talking about is that little part that's in four across Belt Line.
Where does it need to be?
You were right, the mayor had...
Does it need to be five, or does it sample?
It, it, well, let's just look, to, yeah, look to see what happens if it goes to, uh, five, correct, that little spot.
Put that back over there.
That, right.
Put it in five.
Shouldn't make a lot of difference. Twenty, thirty hours to there.
It's really the same.
Yeah, it doesn't change much.
Yeah, it's more geographically compact, too.
Can you see how much of a change there would be with Clay Mathis going straight up all the way to Sine right there? And well, even that dark line on the left, because there's two sides of Clay Mathis, that's all considered creek crossing. And.
You'll have to find population. We can do that, yeah.
Yeah, those two sides and that dark line to the left of your green pointer there.
You want to come all the way up off Mesquite Creek.
There, there you go.
And put it in six, right? Right. So take all of this, put it in six.
Yeah. Okay, and go all the way to the east, everything from the creek?
Yeah, because both, both sides of that is all, they're all homes. They're single.
Yeah, you can.
Oh, because they're still.
It's not, it's not much difference.
Yeah, six is already three four.
That whole area right there?
Mm-hmm.
Into six.
Yes. We need to kick it out. Yeah, just got to kick that out. In fact, we'll have to swap something.
Yeah, let's.
Would be the divider.
Or you'll probably pick it up this year.
Let's see, let me, let me pan, give you some area here. Okay.
And this can all be picked up, depending on how we look at this whole, that might make, that might make it work.
Into five?
Because if this goes into five.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Probably will balance those two out.
Yes.
All the way down to here, this far south?
Yes.
Okay.
That's it.
Wish our building houses up there isn't all ten anymore. I've heard that over here. Yeah, well. You can probably figure out, we could, that's the one, too. Ooh, wow, what is that going to throw out?
It's, it's too much. So we need to, we need to probably back off a little bit.
Well, the problem is all the population is this one and this one.
Yeah.
So if you leave this in six and you just take that section, it might be.
It's a good thought.
Take which one?
So just take this into five.
And leave the back half. Okay.
That makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
It won't make a difference. Just, just make it look nice. There we go. Give you a cleaner look at it.
Six goes all the way out to Carol.
Yeah. You're thinking of the two neighborhoods. Interchange.
Let's make four different colors so you can see a little better.
As she's doing that, you know, the primary thing is this is a starting point in, in looking at throughout the city. We know there's heavy population in the north, little or, you know, less population south. It's been mentioned that all the building is going to be down here. So the next 10 years, you may have a lot of, of six down here, and it'll continue to shift. And I don't know what the 2018 numbers, I don't know that they're that much different than 2010 necessarily right now.
We do not believe that they are. Now, of course, when the next census comes out, depending on what kind of development there's been at that point.
Sure.
We may look back at that and just based on the 2021, but until then.
Okay.
Or the 2020 census.
So input, anything else? I mean, we, we don't have to stop here, but if we're okay with the way this is right now.
Yeah.
As a starting point, I'll say that many, many times, as a starting point, then this would be our illustrative map.
Some good work here.
I like that word. I like the word illustrative.
Okay, great.
Any, anything else? I know this is kind of where we're kind of getting to tonight, but any other comments? I mean, we can go around, anything anybody's cares to share. I'll go sit back down.
I appreciate the hard work.
Thank you. Thank you.
Before we break up, I want to talk to you just a minute about some things to cover.
Get you, get you started.
Yeah, I was going to get a picture of it.
There you go.
Okay, now that we have this plan, the council will take action to formally designate it as the illustrative plan, barring any changes before that time at the September 17th council meeting. At that time, we'll be presenting for you to adopt also redistricting guidelines. These are to be promulgated and distributed to the public so that if the public, if any members of the public want to submit their own plan as an alternative to the illustrative plan, this is the guidelines that everyone will have to follow so that any plans that are submitted are apples to apples to the illustrative plan that we've designed here. And so, again, these are fairly straightforward and commonsensical. Submitted in writing and be legible. Show demographic data so that we're able to compare demographic data based on what, compared to the illustrative plan based on the plans that are submitted. We can't have any plans that only redistrict parts of the city. We need to see a full, full plan. Obviously, you know, one district affects everybody else. We have to see a full plan. Plans must conform to the criteria that the council adopted. And again, comments in writing and legible. And then folks will need to, you know, actually submit their full name and address to the plan. No anonymous plans. And then there's a deadline to do that by the close of the public hearings. The question, these are the next steps. The public input process, the dates that have been suggested to us for public input hearings by staff are October 16th and October 18th. There are essentially two ways that we can handle that, and we have cities that do it both ways. The first way is to actually have the public input process take place at a city council meeting. It'll be a specially called city council meeting. Alternatively, our firm can hold here in Mesquite, town hall meetings where we give our citizens an opportunity to come out on these two dates or other dates as appropriate and provide input. And then we will prepare a written report to present back to you after that. And so one of the things for the council, for council members, just to ponder before the September 17th meeting, which will be the time to formally make this decision, is would the council prefer to hear public input on the illustrative plan in a formal council meeting, or would the council prefer us to hold town hall sessions, gather public input, and then provide a report back? We are happy to do it either way. Again, we have some sudies do it one way, some the other. Both are effective, and just depends on, it's a council preference issue.
And we can discuss that. I think, speaking for myself and I'm sure others, you know, one of them, I would prefer to have at a council meeting if we can, because it's already scheduled and set and all that. I think another one that's even, we do this occasionally, that may be at another different part of the city, because we're on the south end, whether it's the north or the, or the east, you know, something like that.
Yes. Okay. Well, we will work with the city attorney's office to put together the appropriate resolutions to get those set and have those to present to council at the September 17th meeting. And then once the public input process has happened, again, we'll take any changes or modifications into account that need to be done at that point. And then our plan is to present for you a final plan for adoption in November.
Well, yeah, real quick. So we could keep these dates and do north and south or north and east on those dates and then still have an input at one of the council meetings as well.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. That, that may be what we're leaning towards doing then.
Are you saying, Mayor, two outside meetings and one council?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, I like that.
And I was just going to make sure. Am I going to see a revised voting age population breakdown?
Yes, we will. You might have seen as the, the districts were changing, the numbers were updating there, but we will present the updated numbers to go with the illustrative plan. That will go out with the illustrative plan. And of course, we'll also discuss at the September 17th meeting, the way of actually publicizing. Typically, we'll want to post that on the website amongst other means of publication so that it actually gets out to the citizens.
Thank you.
On the graphic you've provided tonight, if you could, just eliminate those former districts lines.
Yes, absolutely.
They certainly got in the way of me being able to easily understand the graphic. Thank you.
Okay, will do.
No, it just won't go off.
It won't go off.
That's what, that must have passed down from me. Yes, sir.
Is there a way to get this sent straight to us so we can actually zoom into it instead of the paper and look at it? Because it's, it's really hard to.
We're going to work with the consultant to try to figure out the best way to distribute the information to council and also to put it out on the website and make sure the public can see it. So.
All right, thank you.
Yes. We're not as young as we used to be. Go ahead.
All right, if there are no more questions, I'll just take this opportunity to thank you very much for the opportunity to work with you. I appreciate all your hard work tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you.